And get started, I apologize for a little bit late start. We had a large agenda and a lot of discussion in our pre-meeting. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are David Rosehacker, Michael Pate, Jeffrey Moore, Sidney Franklin, Christine Carnes, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Acting Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Lisa Agans, our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us, they're right here. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, have been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. We try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A copy of the current Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. And there are no changes to our consent agenda, so I will get started with the consent cases. Agenda item number three, case C eight dash nineteen dash two fifty-eight. Applicant Edward Rose Development Company LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the R six district with a waiver to section fifty-five, two twenty-six height, along, height, to allow a sixty-foot tall tower. This was laid over from the December meeting, location north of George B. Lake Parkway and West Q Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. We'll continue on. Agenda item number eleven, case C ten dash twenty dash forty-three, C twelve dash twenty dash forty-four. Applicant seventy-five North Revitalization Corporation, Othello Meadows. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Omaha View Replat eleven, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R five thirty-five to R five, and approval of the ACI-one overlay district. Location thirty-oh-three and thirty-oh-four Miami Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twelve, case C ten dash twenty dash forty-five, C twelve dash twenty dash forty-six. Applicant Woodsonia North Streams LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of North Streams, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R four and MU. Location northeast of two hundred and fourth and Q Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number thirteen, case C ten dash twenty dash forty-seven, C twelve dash twenty dash forty-eight. Applicant Woodsonia South Streams LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of South Streams, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to section fifty-three, eight, two B cul-de-sac length, along with rezoning from AG to DR and R four. Location southeast of two hundred and fourth and Q Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number fourteen, case C twelve dash twenty dash forty-nine. Applicant Chad Mizegeier. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of MPS two-ten, a Q Campus Replat one, a minor plat outside city limits. Location southwest of George B. Lake Parkway and West Q Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number fifteen, case C twelve dash twenty dash fifty. Applicant Lori Brockman. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Omaha Box Building Subdivision, a minor plat outside city limits. Location south of twenty-first Street E and Avenue J. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number sixteen, case C ten dash twenty dash fifty-one. Applicant is FA Properties LLC. It's on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to CC. Property is located within an ACI-one overlay district. Location thirty-one seventy-one, thirty-one seventy-five, Leavenworth Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on, agenda item number seventeen, case C ten dash twenty dash fifty-two. Applicant Robert Neve. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from R four thirty-five to R four. Location eight-oh-six North Forty-ninth Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number eighteen, case C ten dash twenty dash fifty-three. Applicant Mark Sanford. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from AG to DR. Location west of one hundred and twenty-seventh Ave and Greby Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number nineteen, case C ten dash twenty dash fifty-four. Applicant White Lotus Group. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI-one overlay district. Location fourteen-oh-one Jones Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty, case C ten dash twenty dash fifty-five. Applicant Rainwood Point LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from MU to GI with approval of the IG Industrial Gateway Overlay District. Location southeast of Blair High and Rainwood Roads. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-one, case C ten dash one dash sixty-one. Applicant Western Springs Land Corp. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for the Grove. Location northeast of one hundred and ninety-second and Pacific Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-four, case C eight dash twenty dash fifty-six. Applicant Nate Victor. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare general in an R five district. Location six-sixty South, one ninety-third Plaza. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-five, case C seven dash twenty dash fifty-seven. Applicant New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, AT&amp;T. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the GI with a waiver of section fifty-five dash five-oh-six height to allow a one hundred and twenty-five foot monopole. A portion of the property is located within the Floodway Overlay District. Location northeast of twenty-eighth and Greby Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do?
May I have to speak on this because I was just notified about it?
Yes, if you want it to be removed, it'll, it'll come back onto the agenda, and then when it comes up, you'll be able to come forward, give your name, address, and you can speak to it.
Because I just have questions about it. If there's somebody I can contact rather than take?
That's all right. We'll take it off the agenda, consent agenda, and then you can ask questions when it's, when it comes up in the agenda, okay?
Will it come up today or?
Yes, yes, it'll come up here in this meeting. Okay. All right, so we're going to take agenda item number twenty-five off of layover. Agenda item number twenty-six, case C seven dash eight dash twenty-two. Applicant Chad Mizegeier. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R four district with a waiver to section fifty-five dash one eighty-six height to allow a fifty-five-foot tall building. Location southwest of George B. Lake Parkway and West Q Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-seven, case C fourteen dash twenty dash fifty-eight. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of the south, north-south alleyway south of Venton Street between Seventeenth and Eighteenth Street, abutting lots four and five, block zero, JE Riley's Subdivision Edition. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, it will be removed. That's twenty-seven is removed from the approval. And the final case is agenda item number twenty-eight, case C fourteen dash twenty dash fifty-nine. Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request vacation of the north-south alleyway south of Charles Street, east of north-eighteenth Street to the Dead End, abutting lots ten through fifteen, block C of Horbach Subdivision and Horbach's First Edition, and lot one, block zero of Omaha Campus of Hope Edition, and lot two, block zero of New Vision Condos Edition. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Yes. Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry. It's on for approval. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Those are the consent cases. Do we have a motion for those cases that are on for approval?
I move for approval of agenda items three, eleven, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, and twenty-eight.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes, however, I'm ready to dissent on item number fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes, excluding item number eleven, we're all.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items on for layover?
Motion to layover items twelve, thirteen, fifteen, and twenty-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes, however, I'm ready to dissent on item twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, that ends the consent items. Those cases that were left on consent are decided for today. There'll be no further action taken for those. If you were here for one of those cases, you can remain, or you're welcome, you're welcome to remain, or you're free to leave. So, those cases are done for the day. Our first case is administrative only. There'll be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one, case C ten dash nineteen dash two sixty-one, C twelve dash nineteen dash two forty-nine. Applicant All Holy Spirit Greek Orthodox Church. Request: Final plat approval of Everett Place Replat one, lots one through twenty-three, outlots A through C, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG and R five to DR and R five. Location southwest of one hundred and ninety-second and Harney Streets. Eric, you're presenting?
Yes. So, the preliminary plat for this replat was heard before the Planning Board on December fourth, and subsequently approved by City Council on January twenty-eighth meeting. The proposal is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. Just two items to point out. The applicant has had made changes, has made changes to one hundred and ninety-second Street right-of-way, but what is being reflected as outlot C has actually been purchased and is public right-of-way, so that will have to be excluded before the final plat proceeds to City Council. Also, the applicant will need to work with city staff regarding the finalized tree mitigation planting plan as they want to plant the one hundred and six mitigation trees off-site. So, they'll need to continue to coordinate with city staff regarding that plan prior to council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG and R five to DR and R five. Approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, and the three items listed in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval for rezoning from AG and R five to DR and R five. And the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval, and addressing the three items in the recommendation report, I would inform the City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number two, case C ten dash nineteen dash two thirty-nine, C eleven dash nineteen dash two twenty-four. Applicant Alco Properties. Request rezoning from R four thirty-five and R seven to R seven, along with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. This was laid over from the January meeting. Location forty-nine twelve and forty-nine fourteen Davenport Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you for allowing us to lay over a couple months ago, and give us time to meet with representatives of the neighborhood, and giving us extra time to work through some of the details of the project and the design that should have maybe been included in the first go-around.
What, did you give your name and address? I'm sorry.
Jeff Deal, seventeen seventeen Vincent Streets. So, what I'd like to share with you this afternoon, and I'll try to be brief, is I want to review some features of the previous design that we've focused on to improve the overall project, talk about some of the more substantial revisions that we've made after hearing the neighborhood talk about some of their oppositions to the project, and then dive a little bit into some of the detail of the project that wasn't included the last go-around, but, and I think it was sort of a miss on our part by not including some extra craft and high-level detail that might be more appropriate for a historic neighborhood of this type. The previous design, which is on the screen now, a couple of things I want to point out. The masonry portion of the facade was really a blank brick wall without any additional articulation or detail around the openings for the windows. The windows themselves had less divisions, so more glass, less mullions that might start to read as a little bit more commercial, or more appropriate for a higher-density project of a different scale. And finally, where we've focused more attention is on the ground level or the approach or arrival of the building. The previous design had less contrast, it was less of a formal entrance, and it wasn't really celebrated approaching the building from the street. The design revisions, so I'll talk about most of what we've done through the elevations, but a couple of things to note here is that we've made the entrance from the street and sidewalk more formal, more straight-on to the actual front door, and we've added planters and landscaping on either side to make that more celebrated. We have given the entrance more depth, and we've changed the canopy, so the canopy is now the full width of the entrance. It has more visual weight and mass, and the CMU that is now on the front of the building on the first floor has sort of a recessed vertical stepped feature to give the entrance more depth. I'll go over that a little bit more in a second. So, some of the details, the canopy is one area that we've focused on to sort of, we've heard the neighborhood say that it's a street of front porches and that kind of thing. We didn't really have that in the previous design, so what we've done is we've added a canopy that has more weight and mass to it, so it's going to be more of a feature. It articulates the entrance much better than what we did before. And the, the design of that, we intend is it'll be a metal canopy, but we intend the faces of it to have sort of a decorative patterning, or something that starts to feel more custom as a design feature for the building. What that patterning actually is, we would develop when we get into the working drawings, but the idea is that we want it to be something that is more special than just a blank metal Those are the first two call-outs. On the left, on the brick facade, what we've done, instead of having just a blank brick wall, is we've added a, a brick rowlock at the ground floor level, and that would be either recessed or projected slightly, basically standing brick on end, so it's a different brick patterning, but something that starts to give a little bit of shadow line at each floor line, and add a little bit more articulation to the brick itself. That doesn't really read, and the elevation, it's a little bit hard to read in the example image, but that starts to break up that sort of vertical expansive brick. I mentioned the vertical brick coursing that we're including at the entry. That vertical brick coursing, which is the example image on the left, is basically being added to the openings on the brick portion of the building, on the principal facade and the rear facade. And the idea there is that instead of rather than just a brick punched opening with no detail, we're adding some brick detail that steps back to meet the window. It adds depth to the wall and the facade, and a little bit more interest in sort of that higher craft of masonry detailing that might be more appropriate to a neighborhood like this. The burnished CMU block that is surrounding the garage at the main level, we've wrapped that around to the front of the building, just to be more consistent. And rather than have just a blank CMU wall, we've done a couple of things highlighted here, is we're adding sort of vertical slots or punched openings that would be screened to break up the horizontal expanses of CMU. That'll happen on the west-facing elevation also. With the windows, we've broken down the scale of those, are still the larger openings that talk well to the street, but we're taking inspiration from older brick mason warehouse buildings, and looking for more of a gritted effect with the mullions without mimicking the historic nature of a warehouse building, but we're trying to break down the scale of these windows much more than what we were before. On the west elevation, this is illustrating the larger expanse of CMU on the, if you recall, on the, the north and the east elevations, because the site slopes up, the CMU starts to become more hidden by the, the topography of the site. But we're adding that vertical slot or punched opening in the CMU to break up that horizontal expanse of masonry again. And we're also adding a recessed four-inch CMU course horizontally that'll break up the, the vertical nature of that wall. So, we're trying to break up these larger expanses of masonry with more detailing than what was previously included. Another area that we've been talking to the neighborhood about is the west and the east elevations facing the neighbors on the side yards, trying to make sure there's enough visual interest for those neighbors. This is where we have the recessed balconies. I think maybe those weren't reading as well before, so we're adding a punch of color at the rear of those balconies, just to ensure that that recess carving out from the facade is read well and it's interesting enough. That's the extent of the, the sort of level of detail that we've added and the changes. It's essentially the same project, a layer of parking with three stories of apartments above. The quantity of the apartments hasn't changed, the overall massing hasn't changed, but we've started to add sort of, I think, a level of detail that's more appropriate for a project like this in a historic neighborhood. So, that's where I'll end, to leave time for others to speak, but if you have questions, let me know.
Okay.
Do you mind, do you mind if some of the parking stalls?
Included within the.
So there's 21 units and 21 parking stalls.
There's 21.
So we're, it's a one-to-one ratio that we're looking for.
Okay.
Any others? Any other comments or questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Just a second.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
My name is Steve Elkin, 999 South Logan Street, Suite 300, Denver, Colorado. One, some other things that I should be on, added on to what Jeff said, we met with representatives of the Neighborhood Association, and some of the things that he mentioned, we evolved. For example, we presented three or four different brick colors. They, they kind of picked the one that they liked from the board. The, the details on the windows, we created like two or three different scenarios, and we kind of chose the one that seemed to be representative of the board's best feeling what, what mimicked, so, you know, the character of the neighborhood and things like that, too. The metal detail he pointed out to there was comments from the neighborhood board members at the building on Underwood, but the scout has the metal detail there. They liked that, so we incorporated that, not necessarily imitated, but we incorporated meta-detail that they mentioned that they liked on Underwood there. So we tried to address, and we pretty much did address all the different comments that they had. We incorporated more masonry along the sides of the building than the original proposals all through their comments as well, too. It was a good constructive meetings, multiple meetings that we have with the board members and things like that, and I think the, the plan, you know, for the most part reflects everything that they've kind of encouraged us to upgrade, so to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents?
Yeah.
Come forward, sir. Give your name and address.
Yes.
My name is Michael Scow. I live at 4913 Chicago Street. So I own the house and the property immediately north of this project. In that sense, I suppose that I may be the one most affected by the erection of this edifice. I have three areas of, of concern, and they involve questions. On the original scheme that we got, from the architect, I assume, and then on the revised one also, so this would have been the one that arrived in November, and then again last month in February. And on the right-hand side, it indicates the ground floor, the second floor, the third floor, and then another third floor. You know, where I come from, after the third floor, you have a fourth floor. And I wonder if this is the kind of attention to detail and care that we can expect from this intrusion upon our neighborhood? Or was it an attempt to suggest that it's not really a four-floor structure, but instead just a third, a three-floor structure? The second question that I have involves the parking that you asked about. If there are 21 units there and 21 parking spaces on that ground floor, I wonder how many members of the, the council here who live with a partner have just one car between I suspect that that's not the case, that most of them would have two cars, one for themselves and one for their partners. That means that for each of those 21 units, those people will have to find parking on the street, or they may end up having to park on the next street north on Chicago Street, and they will walk across my property then in order to get to their, their unit. And the third question that I have is, have you done any studies at all to suggest that people who can afford to live in these units are the kinds of people who might be willing to take public transportation, the new buses that are apparently one of the driving forces for the erection of this, this edifice? So I would appreciate any kind of response to my concerns here.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
I'm Sarah Nelson. I live at 4806 Underwood Avenue. So we, the board, Dundee Memorial Park Association, Mary and I, we met with Jeff at Blue Line, had a wonderful conversation. You all got my letter that I wrote to for the last meeting that we had. So the conversation that we had with Jeff addressed one of those two concerns that we had about the building, the aesthetics. We were very happy with the changes that they made in the details to the brick and the windows and the garage and the front entrance. However, we haven't seen the final, just side note, I'm not complaining, we haven't seen the final drawings for the front entrance, and that is very important to us. That was one of our main issues, and we haven't seen those yet, which we would really like to. So that, that aside, so our second concern was the size of this building with the PUR overlay. I emailed you, Steve, on February 11th, asking, can you explain to us more why this has, why this building has to be so big? And I didn't get a response. I know you're a very busy guy. I am, too. I'm not judging you. So, but that is a question that we, as the neighborhood, still want an answer to. Why does this building have to be this large? There are eight buildings total in Dundee that are four stories or higher, only eight. So the rest of our neighborhood is three stories and under, and they definitely do not take up as much square footage as, well, the larger buildings do. They take up about as much square footage as this building will take up, and they don't look good when they take up that much square footage. They just don't. They don't fit in the neighborhood. They just don't. So why does this building have to be that big? Why do we have to put this, the back of the garage as far to the lot line and the sides of the building as close to the lot line as possible? Why does it have to be that way? So I don't like giving criticism without a suggestion. So I actually would love to see the people in this building utilize the new Orbit bus. So why don't we lessen the parking? That's my suggestion. I might get, I might have to say that that's a Sarah Nelson suggestion rather than Dundee Memorial Park Association suggestion, otherwise I might get some criticism. But I think that that would be a great idea. Make these people use the bus. So especially if we're going to be asking for tax incremental financing, let's do it. Let's encourage these people to do that. So I think we have more opponents, but that's, that's my, that's my spiel.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Mary Green, 5106 Western Avenue. And I think there's a few opponents here, and we don't want to be redundant, but I think really the size is really the issue, and we've been learning about the missing middle housing in Omaha, and we need to have more of that available. And my concern is I think this building is bigger and not of scale with the other existing houses on the block. We are tearing down a house that's 100 years old or older to, to make room for this, and so we'd rather see something more in that housing of scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jeff, did you want to come up and address the questions?
I can answer some of my questions. Why don't you go ahead on?
All right. Jeff Deal, 1717 Vincent Street. Taking the questions in order, it's a four-floor building, a garage, level, layer of garage at the ground level, and then three floors of apartments above. If there's a discrepancy on the elevations, that's a, an error, but it's clearly a four-level building. Regarding the parking, and I, I think the question about the number of parking stalls and then the demographics, who might possibly using transit, I, I think this is the, exactly the type of building that should be along this corridor to help support the forthcoming Orbit line. I don't live in this neighborhood. When we, when my wife and I moved back from New York eight or 10 years ago, we lived on Capitol Avenue a few blocks away from here. We were a single-car family at that time. I took the bus all the time or rode my bike to our office south of downtown. A former employee of ours lives across the street from this project on Davenport, and he and his wife are a single-vehicle occupancy. He rides the bus all the time and is looking forward to the Orbit line when that launches. So I, I think the demographic that is going to be in this neighborhood will be using transit, and that's why this sort of project fits in well here. That covers those issues. In terms of the, the canopy design, Sarah and Mary and I have been emailing and talking about that a bit, and I think this kind of gets to the heart of the sort of, the, some of the questions that we had last time about what's being presented here and what's going to be built, what's designed and what's final. We're not into working drawings yet, meaning that we don't have our full suite of engineers on board. We're not cutting sections and details through the canopy, for instance, right, and really figuring out how it's exactly it's going to be built, what the fabrication method is, the, the final, final materials, what the fasteners look like. That's, that has to come during the working drawing phase. We're in the design phase right now. What I will say and commit to is that the, the length of it, the height of it, the mass of it, the look that you see in the rendering and the elevations is what we're going to end up with. The actual face of it, the, the detail, the nuance, the, I mentioned a, a custom screen or custom patterning on it, or a custom-like patterning, that's going to get worked out during the working drawings. It's, and that's definitely something that we would keep meeting with the neighborhood about, but it's a level of detail that I, I don't know is appropriate for this PUR process. Not that we wouldn't like to design every little nuance of the project, but this process doesn't allow for it to get into that level of detail, but we will commit to the, the intention of what's on the drawings right now. I'll turn it over to Steve for any of the other questions.
Steve Elkin, 999 South Logan Street, Suite 300, Denver, Colorado. There, there's always a balance of how many cars or how many parking spaces, things like that. We would rather err to have more parking spaces than less. I know certain parts of the overlay district of Omaha have reduced it down to .75 per unit and stuff like that. We would prefer to keep it at the one, just, we just think it makes more sense to do it that way. As it relates to the canopy and the design, stuff like that, we'll continue to make a commitment to the board or representatives of the board or whatever to work on that. I, I want to kind of reference the buildings that we have done in the area, and that's the, the 5,000 block of Underwood where the, where the radio station is, where Hello How they Used to Be and the EPA and the, I always forget the name what they have. They started off with Great and Medical Associates, now it's at least the third time, so. We've done that. Another building we did that is also, it's that 25th and Farnham. It now houses a coffee shop, voodoo taco, and a bookstore and gift shop. And it used to be a barbecue pit or.
What was it called?
Smoke pit. So if you looked at what it used to be, it looked like a smoke pit, and you look at what it looks like now, we're very proud of how it looks now. So the, and then we, we also own what used to be Cullum Heights Apartments on 27th and Cummings, and we probably now put about a million and a half dollars into that building, restanding, put all new windows in. Half the units are getting all new kitchens and things like that. So we take pride in what we do, too. We're, we're long-term owners. We've owned Underwood now about 15 years, things of that nature. So we are a neighborhood person as well, too, and we'd be more glad to continue dialogue, even if it means, you know, reexamining brick colors and things of that nature. We don't, we're not slamming, we're not closing the door on any future dialogue as well either. So that's, that, that's all I have to say. Yes.
Quick question for Steve. It appears that there's no two-bedroom.
Units in this, is that right? No, the goal was to be what we believe is more of a transient, a person that uses mass transit. So the majority of the units are either what I call loft, but the nomenclature is more buffet or studios. I call them lofts because I don't like the word studio. To reference my mother, she says I'm not sleeping in my living room. So when I, she's, lives in a retirement center, she lives independent, she's supposed to be moving to assisted living for three years now. She keeps on telling me I'm not going to sleep in my living room. So I always chose the word loft because we've created these, we've actually created a little sleeping nook or a bed nook, so it isn't part of the living room. And the rest are just one bedrooms. So there are new two bedrooms, and you could almost kind of reverse that. If you made the same building, you know, to, with all two bedrooms, and I think you would have, even if you had 16 instead of 21, you had 16 like ones and twos, you would have a higher demand for cars. Because the two bedrooms would have that. That's why we chose and listened to the planning staff and the people in the city. Let's really keep it towards what we're, our goal is, and that's to bring affordable housing to the mass transit lines and stuff like that. Okay, thank you.
Steve, one more question for you.
Yes.
A lot of comments from the neighbors about the size of the building.
Yes.
I mean, what determines for you what you would have to put in there to, to.
Well, it was 24 units. And the, you know, I think we, original plan, we had more studios, and we were like 24, 25, 26. The staff thought it was a little bit too dense, so then we moved it down to where we are today, and we still made the commitment, even though it's less, we've still made the commitment to continue on with that size and stuff like that. So it, it actually was because they had more studios before. It was like any other developer. You try to do it, so we try to reach a balance economically-wise on what makes the most sense. Like I say, it started off around 24, 25, 26, and we were going to do some tandem parking to create, quote, the parking requirement, stole it one to one, and they even said, well, you know, I really, we could also accept .75. I just still not a believer in, in not saying what your rules are. I, I still think there's, there could be some repercussions when you have too many buildings at .75 per unit, because even though they are taking the transit, sometimes some people do have a car as well, too.
Any other questions or comments before we hear from Eric? Eric?
Sure. I won't get into too many specifics. We've, we've talked about that for a few meetings now. Just do want to point out that the site plan does indicate 22 parking stalls, so there's one extra. So if that changes, we'll just need to work with the applicant, but.
Just to clarify, we kind of count the stalls there for the tenants. The other one's a handicap to make sure that there's also a handicap available, so you're right, there was 22.
21 plus one handicap, okay. So yeah, so the, the site does consist of, one of the lots is R4 zoning, the other lot is R7. If you remember back to the January board meeting, there was an amendment approved to the future land use to, to take this stretch and some adjacent properties to high-density residential. Most of the properties on this block face and in this area are high-density residential, so the R4 is more of an exception in this area. So staff is supporting the rezoning to the R7, the consolidation of the zoning to R7. The number of waivers requested with the PUR are common to what we see with PUR developments based on the suburban code of our na, or suburban nature of our zoning code that is definitely not uncommon. This is a future transit-oriented development area, as mentioned multiple times by both the applicant and neighbors. We are encouraging this type of density for this area. We think that the changes to the elevations are good additions, getting down to that refiner details that'll continue as it progresses forward to city council and if approved, onto the building permit process. So city staff is always working on the requirements of meeting urban design and the finer level of details. We definitely encourage the applicant to continue to work with the neighbors on. City staff is recommending approval. City staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from R435 and R7 to R7, approval of the PUR subject to submittal of acceptable final PUR plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any additional questions?
I'd just like to make just an editorial comment, I guess, and direct it to the developer and also to the people who are testifying, that as most of you know, that with the rapid transit, we're trying to encourage all kinds of development within the inner-city area in order to densify and take advantage of the infrastructure that we do have. And we have a lot of different choices of how we do that. We do that with townhouse projects, small apartment projects, also big apartment projects. And obviously, this project kind of falls in the middle of that, where you're in a unique area town that's got its own character, it's got a broad mix of different kinds of structures in there, and this falls well within that, within that bound. And I worked years ago with a owner that was trying to buy that one empty lot and couldn't make it work with the number of units to make it work. He obviously didn't think about buying a adjoining lot, which then does make it work. And so I think it's a good balance for the neighborhood to be able to improve the tax revenues to the city so that the neighborhood can stay viable and that the rapid transit that we want to encourage can be utilized. And as you said, with the number of parking stalls, that does encourage people to locate here that are willing to take the mass transits. And I also think, just as Eric said, you made pretty subtle changes to the elevations of it, but I think they were very effective in changing that appearance. It was a fairly bland look before, and once you see those incorporated in the actual structure, it's going to, it's going to look a lot better. So those are my comments. And with that, I guess I'll recommend approval of the rezoning from R435 to, and R7 to R7, and the approval of the PUR subject to submittal of acceptable final PUR plans prior to forwarding to the request of the City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number four, case C3-96-276. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of amendment to the downtown northeast redevelopment plan, location northwest and southwest of 11th and Dodge Streets. And Eric, are you presenting?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is an amendment to the downtown northeast redevelopment plan. This is a plan that was originally approved back in 1996, and there have been multiple amendments since that time, including two amendments, one in 1999 and the other in 2018, that added area to the actual planned area. So this amendment is specific to the Omaha Performing Arts Society Project Redevelopment Plan and includes approximately 4.8 acres of land area. This project includes an expansion to the Holland Performing Arts Center, as well as to allow construction of a 107,000-square-foot live music venue on the surface parking lot currently between Dodge Street and Capitol Avenue, between 11th and 12th Street. The expansion to the Holland Performing Arts Center would include educational and administrative office facilities to the east of the existing Performing Arts Center. Along with this significant redevelopment and expansion of a great civic use in the area, the city is willing to contribute $1.1 million to assist the development for the installation of various public improvements, including but not limited to street repair, lighting, streetscape additions, and potential sewer work. I'll do an official recommendation of approval after the public hearing.
Do we have any proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, do we have any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does the board have any comments or questions?
Just one question regarding the city's commitment to public improvements. Is that pretty typical for projects like this? I mean, that seems like a lot of money the city's committing to this.
I would say for this type of important civic use, it's definitely common for that type of contribution. Jennifer Taylor with the Law Department has also been, in conjunction with the actual writing of the plan, so if she has any additional input, she could add that as well. I personally have not had those conversations about, you know, the amount of money contributed that would usually be at the administration level and the director level, and I have not been personally a part of that. But it's not uncommon. The city has the ability with redevelopment bonds or sometimes transportation bonds for these efforts, and that's where that funding would come from.
Jennifer, did you want to add anything?
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. I would go ahead and add, with this particular project, it's actually a fairly reasonable contribution for the city to make to this kind of an increased civic use downtown. One. Two, these funds will be attributed mostly to public improvements in association with the project along the streetscape, curbs, planters, and things like that. So it'll actually go towards a public aspect of the project. And third, I would point out that actually, the owner of the lot paid the city full market, full fair market value for the two parcels they purchased from the city, which is very close to the amount of money that is actually being contributed. So I think the city found this to be a very reasonable ask from the developer and a more than reasonable contribution.
Any additional questions or comments? Do we have a, you gave your?
Recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number five, case C3-20-36. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Benson Theater TIF redevelopment project plan, location 6054 Maple Street, and Bridget is presenting.
Don't know if the screen has changed, mine hasn't. Well, he's working on that. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Good afternoon. Before you, it's the Benson Theater TIF redevelopment project. This particular project, excuse me, was formerly the Benalto Theater. It was constructed in 1923 as a vaudeville theater. And, I guess he'll get that. So the actual address is 6054 Maple Street, so it's right in the heart of the Benson Business Ms. Ryan, Amy Ryan is here, as well as David Levy, the attorney representing her, and I think they may say a few words afterwards. But Ms. Ryan, many may know the pizza shop. She was the owner of the pizza shop, and I do remember that this was one of her, after that closed, this was another one of her visions, to bring this theater back to life. And the idea with this theater is to renovate the building fully as a single-use space for general public assembly, and then the intent is to provide an alternative stage for independent programming with an emphasis on education during the day and some entertainment at night. She has already secured 15 leased parking spaces that are directly behind the building, and then she also has arrangements with the law firm in the area, as well as the church in the area. The application also talked about the fact that there would be, if necessary, arrangements with Benson's, Benson High School's parking lot to provide maybe shuttle transportation back and forth if necessary. So she, being a long-term resident, if you will, business operator in the Benson area, is very familiar with the Benson needs for parking, so she has covered that. So that's really a great thing. She is asking for $400,000 in TIF, tax increment financing, which happens to represent about almost 12% of the total funding, which is about average, keeping in mind that this is a rehab project, so all rehab costs are TIF-eligible. The estimated total project cost is about $3.4 million. The zoning is currently NBD, and there is no change to that. The public improvements that are going to be associated with this project are just improvements to the alleyway behind the building. There have been some improvements in the Benson area in the recent years, so aren't, there aren't really any additional public improvements to the sidewalk or streetscaping that are required or necessary. As I mentioned, the building was built in 1923. It is a historic structure. However, it does not have any local landmark designation at this moment. I do believe that Amy may be looking into getting historic designation, and so that could change the funding a little bit, but that wouldn't have any hindrance or prohibit the project from moving forward. So with that, I would ask for your approval. Sorry you couldn't see pictures.
Have we, he might? Have you got it going yet, or here we go?
Perfect. Thank you. No, it's okay. So this here is Maple Street, just to kind of give you a bearings, and then Northwest Radio Highway, so that's looking north. And what you see highlighted in yellow is the actual Benson Theater, 6054 Maple. It's just a closer aerial view of Maple Street, and this is the building right there, the alley in the back. And then here's a rendering of what it looks like if you were to drive by today, and then what's proposed, the proposed facade, which, you know, really looks nice. Also in your packet, I believe, was the south elevation, as well as the first-floor plan, so the box office up here, restrooms, a bar area, storage catering here, and then the seating area and a stage. And then the second floor is just open to below, and the projection area, mechanical storage. So that is what is being proposed today. So I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, Bridget. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon, board members. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. On behalf of the Benson Theater project, with me today are Amy Ryan with the Benson Theater and Sam Garden from CBRE. As usual, Bridget did a great job of describing the project, and I will not belabor it. Although I will say, this really is a great community project. I mean, it's an entertainment use at night, but it's also really a community use during the day. It'll be available for school groups and educational programs and all kinds of things like that for which there really is a need in the area, and this will serve that need in a great way. You know, in terms of the master plan, preserve and protect unique natural and historical features, which serves as a foundation for Omaha's overall image, reverse deterioration in older areas of the city, you see what the building looks like today, encourage private investment. This project is consistent with the master plan, I would say, in spades. In terms of the historic nature of the building, Bridget is right, it is not designated a historic landmark, but we have been meeting, the architects from Alley Pointer have been meeting with the city's preservation staff to make sure that the facade is the best replica of the original Benson Theater facade that it can be. There's modifications actually going on right now to, well, you saw the, kind of, the arched top and things like that to really make it look like the Benson Theater as it once looked, the sign, same kind of thing there. So really a great project, I think a modest TIF request. This is one of those projects that financially needs every dime and every bit of help it can get, and it'll put a lot back into the community, and I think the request is well justified. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David.
David, with the education portion of that, is that going to be like a school, classes, or will that be where people that are, that get a chance to perform, you know, in a theater setting as part of like Benson High School's classes?
You know, it could be any of that. And I know from talking to Amy about the project, I couldn't list them off for you, but she's already had lots of interest from really a wide variety of groups involving schools, other educational endeavors, theater programs, all of those kind of things. So it'll be a wide variety of events there.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions before we hear from Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number six, case C3-20-38. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Holy Name Housing TIF redevelopment project plan, location 3234 and 3236 Miami Street, 2706 North 33rd Street, 3309 Miami Street, 2606 and 2608 North 33rd Street, 2524 North 33rd Street, 3401 Maple Street, 3319 Corby Street, 3331 Corby Street, and 3333 Miami Street. And Bridget, you're presenting.
Afternoon again, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. For this particular Holy Name project, this is a project that is determined to provide affordable housing through single-family as well as rental. It is comprised of 15 housing units, eight single-family units. All of the 15 units will have four bedrooms, and Holy Name, most people are familiar with Holy Name and their endeavors in the community for decades, and are familiar with their quality, so it's good to see that they're continuing to help and provide these types of homes. So four-bedroom homes for the single family, and then seven row homes. What you see on the screen, just to give you some bearings, so this is north, this is Lake Street, this is 33rd Street, and this is Miami Street. So these lots here, here, and here are the lots for the single family, and then this particular lot is for the rental, which they're calling the Villa Rose. So seven rental row homes here, and then the rest are single-family. Here's another rendering of the same, 33rd, here's Miami. These would be the single-family, these are also single-family, and that's the rental. Holy Name has done something unique in one way, but not unique with these types of projects, where they've pulled together a lot of different funding sources to make this work. Many of the funding sources have income restrictions, and so this particular map is just kind of indicating the funding sources. I will let Mike Golly, who is here, the executive director of Holy Name, speak more to the financing, but they're, they have a Crown program that's been around for a long time, which is a rent-to-own. Some of these single-family homes are going to be for sale, but they will be rented for the first 10 years, and then after that 10 years, the homeowners will have built up some equity. That homeowner will have a chance to purchase that home. So it's their shared equity program, so not like the Crown rental program. And then the row houses are strictly rental properties. The rental properties are funded with primarily low-income housing tax credits, so those are targeted to households with a 60% or below median family income. These single-family homes have funding that involves trust funds that allow the median family income to go up to at least 100%, I believe maybe even 120%. But again, I'll let Mike go into more details. So again, that opens it up to a large range of people who could participate in the program and purchase these homes. So again, total of 15 homes in this general area. The amount of the ask for TIF is $275,000. It only represents about 6.1% of the total funding. The total estimated project cost or investment is about $4.5 million. The properties already zoned are residential, so are from R4 to R5 with a PUD, so they're already properly zoned. In terms of public improvements, it'll be the basic streetscaping, you know, improvement of sidewalks or putting in new sidewalks where necessary, any minor street repairs, and then maybe some utility improvements. and then maybe some utility improvements. The land use is appropriate, and I didn't get to say on the other end, but these have gone through the TIF committee before they come to you, so TIF committee has given approval, and this does comply with the master plan. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, Bridget. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. Mike Golly, Executive Director of Holy Name Housing, forty-three twenty-four Fort Street. Back to your, your screen here in this picture a minute. There you go, thank you. So at thirty-three thirty-three Miami, this is what those row houses will look like. From the front side is facing Miami, and then the rear side, which is how that worked for us. Like Bridget said, she's got the right, you know, income restrictions we have on this property. What else can I tell you? So the other single-family homes, all of them but the one on Maple and Thirty, third, excuse me, Maple and Thirty-fourth Street, the one on Thirty-fourth and Maple, we're still designing a house there, and it goes in a corner, so it's a little more difficult to design. But the other houses, at the other locations, will either be split level like that house, or a ranch, or a two-story single-car garage. That's kind of the designs we have there. And like Bridget said, the residents of the single-family homes can buy those homes after, after ten years. A little bit different, income mix than a low-income housing tax credit project. On a bigger scale, these are all the properties we have developed or developing in the area with different income levels for all of them. Anything I can answer, questions for you, or?
I have a quick question for you. I find that if they've lived there for ten years and then buy it at-
At whatever the market price is at that time, or how does that work?
They buy it for appraised value.
Appraised value.
Yeah, because we've, we've done other forums and things, people want us to sell them for an appraised value, so that's what we'll sell them for. And, yeah. I appreciate it for you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Name and address, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, Dewan Hayes, twenty-six oh eight Patrick Avenue. I am a resident of twenty-six oh eight, so just near down the street. There are some properties for disposal later. I really wanted to speak, comment on the, on the design and efficacy of, of Holy Name Housing. I'm really appreciative of Holy Name Housing over the years. The fact that we have a deficiency of housing is, is evident, and it's something that we need to address aggressively. I really appreciate that. Something that I do struggle with, though, is the design of choice, and how it is constructed, and what kind of environment we're creating. Because honestly, the, you saw the designs that were shown, they're bland, they're suburban, they take up much of the lot, most of it's dedicated to cars and parking, concrete pads, and, and it separates the, the community from being present with itself. I walk, I ran around that, the very area just yesterday around Adams Park, and it, what makes it beautiful, makes it intimate, is because of the proximity of the homes, and how you have porches, and you have places to view, you have sightlines, you have tree lines, it's meant to be close. Whereas the, a lot of our code, frankly, it was noted earlier, it's very suburban-oriented, it's being reflected here in what we're referring to as urban core. And earlier, there was a discussion with, with Dundee about the density, and, you know, really wanting to make it more transit-oriented. North Twenty-fourth Street was a part of the Forever North study, really with transit-oriented development, and I'll comment more on it later with the disposal line, but that should, I believe that should be carried through in the neighborhood and with, and with the design. So when we're approving a redevelopment plan, being, having, being really intentional and being aspirational about kind of design choices we're making, because these are going to be our habitats for the next, hopefully, twenty-eight years. I live in a house that's a hundred years old. Will these last that long? We're already seeing that a lot of our newer development today is not sustainable enough to even be with us for maybe two decades. Is it regenerative rather than extractive? Does it produce its own energy? What, how does it treat water? How do we, how does it affect non-humans, like animals and birds? Like, we have to be very cognizant of those choices, those sustainable choices, because ten year, after ten years of living and renting in this place and then buying it at whatever value it is at that time, what are, what value is truly being repped from it? Is it hopefully a market value at that time, or is it a, or is it a long-term sustainable life-giving value that you're getting in return from this habitat that you're choosing to invest in today with the resources that we're having? So I'm not necessarily against the approval of this plan, but I think in the ti, with, with you saying yes to this, can you commit and approve and say that you would live in these homes that are being built? Honestly, and how, and who is going to purchase it? Myself, I'm twenty-five years old. Will I be purchasing this home? I frankly not, not with what's being offered here. And so I, yes.
I understand your point, and maybe if they changed design, it, it would cost more money, where they wouldn't be able to maybe build as many houses, and so that would be something that, you know, you'd probably be able to discuss with, with Holy Name, but that's, that's the thing that I worry about most for, you know, if it's like, well, we want porches, and we want, you know, certain things that, I, I understand that part of it. Maybe there would only be, you know, ten units that they're building right now instead of fifteen, so.
So with that, with quantity, but are we, so we're willing to forgo quality for quantity?
I didn't say that, I just said that maybe that's why that they're doing it that way.
And I, and I've spoken to Mike at, at events, he's come in and talked to me about the designs proposed for twenty, for the Twenty-sixth Street areas in the Long School neighborhood, and I walk those lots often, and I'm seeing this here, it's, there's, it's been brought up, and I'm like, hey, there's architects who are willing to work with you and offer this information, here are guides, I can advise you, there are ways that we can do this differently, but if we're, if we're defaulting with the design, and we're defaulting with how things are currently done, we're going to get default rates, and that's, and you're going to get default value. It's really about the, the overall integrity of it. Are you just building houses to build houses, or are you building houses to build lives and community? And what does that mean? Especially like, I'm saying this as a person who like, this is my livelihood, I walk, I bike, I see these places, this is of, an environment that affects me. We kind of build houses and, and these things as if they don't affect us, and they do. So it may be a private developer who can do whatever they want to do, that's okay, like, but it affects all of us. And so I say this for this project, but all of the projects that are coming, especially in my, like, in the neighborhood in which I live, there's going to be a ton coming before you in the next year that are going to affect our world.
Okay.
Thank, so please really consider that with your approval, whatever you say, make sure you're engaging with them, and the young people who are going to inhabit this place.
All right. Thank you, Dewan.
Thank you.
All right. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mike, did you want to come forward and, or Bridget, and address any of Dewan's concerns?
Mike Golly, forty-three twenty-four Fort Street. The, one of the primary drivers of us developing the seven row houses at Thirty-fourth and Miami was it increased our density and provide different type housing. Because originally, that address was zoned for four single-family homes. So now we're putting seven-row houses on there, so it is providing some difference. But again, primarily, we're providing affordable housing in areas where there's vacant property, and that's our primary mission. And a lot of what we build is done by funds that direct what size it is. It's the economics of it all.
Okay.
But thank you.
Just a quick question, David.
Yeah.
Would you say that you have a higher demand than you have capacity to fulfill right now?
We have not taken new names for two years.
Yeah.
Because we have more people than, yeah.
So obviously, the, the product must be acceptable.
Yeah.
Just, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bridget, did you want to add?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I think I, the only thing I'd just like to add is, I'd like to say that Dewan's comments are not lost on us in the planning department, and I do not speak for our director, but we do have conversations about design and sustainability. Some projects are just way ahead, and, you know, we're, we're talking about that in, in terms of future houses that will be coming before you in the next, who knows, maybe five years, but we are looking at those things, and what can be more efficient, what can be more sustainable, and the types of, of houses. I know you've heard the term missing middle and all of those things, but looking at what are the, the right types of houses to, to construct for the families that we're looking at now and into the future. So his comments are not lost on us.
Thank you. Thank you, Bridget. Any other comments or questions?
I was throwing one, I appreciate your comments as well. I think subsidized housing should be more than just acceptable. I think quality, design, sustainability, these things matter, and I, I love that you stood up and, and said those things. The, the challenge, though, is, is with subsidized housing, without, you know, pockets of private funds or philanthropic support, it is challenging to, to meet those standards without that, without that funding mechanism. When you're pulling together a mix of public funds and you're a nonprofit, it can be difficult to meet those expectations in terms of quality and design without that oftentimes private or philanthropic support. And I don't know if that's at play or not, but oftentimes, that's, that's where, that's where the, the, the rub meets there, so I just wanted to, to add that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just, just want to echo, you know, some of the same thoughts that Bridget had and Dewan brought up, and that Sidney brought up, and, and Mike as well. You know, I mean, there's a big conversation regarding affordable, affordable housing, you know, missing-middle housing, different types of housing, the challenges that we face, you know, zoning code, but we do have tools that can work with applicants and, you know, trying to densify in a responsible manner. So we're continuing to have those conversations at all levels of, of the planning department and other levels of, of city staff, and it is a challenge. With that being said, staff recommends approval of this request.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, we're going to take agenda items number seven and twenty-two together. Agenda item number seven is case C three dash twenty dash thirty-nine. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Thirty-eighth and Leavenworth TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, thirty-eight fourteen Leavenworth Street. And number twenty-two, agenda item number twenty-two is case C eleven dash sixteen dash two four seven, C eleven dash twenty dash sixty. Applicant Zach Reinhardt, request rescind the existing planned unit redevelopment, redevelopment and approval of a new planned unit redevelopment. Location, thirty-eight fourteen Leavenworth Street. And for presentation, we'd like to, Bridget, you want to go first?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I was just going to say, I am going to defer to Brian, Brian Eckman, who's going to talk about item number twenty-two.
Okay.
The P U R, and maybe some specifics about the project, and then I'll come back up and talk about TIF a little bit.
Okay. That's where I thought we were headed, so, good.
Hello, Brian Ackert, one-one-nine South Forty-Ninth Avenue. I'm also here with Zach Reinhardt with Burlington Capital, as well as Kyle Hossi with E and A Consulting. They would be able to answer any other questions as well. But what you see in front of you here is a landscaping plan of the Thirty-eighth and Leavenworth site here, so what we've got is Leavenworth here on the south side of the site, Thirty-eighth Avenue here on the west side, and Thirty-eighth Street over here on the east side. What's really interesting about this site is there's actually thirty feet of grade change across from one corner down to the other. So what we're doing with this is trying to utilize that to our best advantage to get parking actually tucked in back behind the building. So when you do look at a, a rendering of the building itself, we do have a garage entrance. This is actually standing on the corner of Thirty-eighth Street and Thirty-eighth Avenue looking north. So the, one of the garage entrances is here on the east side, and then the other one's around the back. What you see in front of you, too, is actually like a six-level structure. There is a basement that's used for parking, as well as a second level that's used for parking, but then on the front here, we do have units facing Leavenworth Street. So we're really trying to hide this garage into the back, and then also bringing a lot of those primary materials out towards the front of Leavenworth Street. One thing we have done, too, is we've, we've met with the neighborhood board members to understand what their aesthetic desire and different needs for the building would be. And we did go back with some different design iterations for them, and understanding that this Thirty-eighth Street side is something that they kind of see as a gateway to their neighborhood. So what we've done is tried to accentuate some of these corners a little bit more, so as this kind of steps up, the other thing this does is the scale starts to drop down. On this side, this is actually the shortest side of our building, with the rest of it kind of marching down Leavenworth Street there, that gets a little bit taller, so. I think with that, we've got a hundred and seventy-two units, there's a hundred and fifty parking stalls within the garage, and then we do have another twelve parking stalls along the street. One other item of importance, too, is that we are adding a lot of public improvements along Leavenworth Street, and those are also some of the other sides as well. So what you'll see today is there's roughly a ten-foot driveline, it's a seven-foot parking, and then another five-foot walk that's directly off of the street here. What we're doing is we're actually dedicating another twelve feet of rideaway back towards Leavenworth Street, which then allows us to get a proper eleven-foot wide driveline, eight-foot parking, eight foot of green space, seven foot of sidewalk, and then another three feet for landscaping up against our building. So it really helps to heighten the public part of the project. When people are walking by here, they're not necessarily right next to traffic. We did work with this, with Planning and Public Works as well, as far as how to get to this design. So I guess with that, I'm here for any questions, and I'll turn it over to Bridget, too.
Do we want to stay on the P U R, or do we want to hear from Bridget? Okay. All right. Come on, Bridget.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I don't know that there's any more I need to add about the actual project, so I'll just say that the amount of the TIF request is 3.3 million, which is about twelve percent of the total funding. The estimated total project cost or investment of the project is a little over 28 million. This has received approval from our TIF committee. The, as you know, the zoning is, is before you as well, and he's already talked about the public improvements, so committee has decided that, you know, this is a very good project. It has been a vacant site for at least a couple of years. I know that, I believe, the building that was there before was vacant probably two to three years prior before it was razed. So it, we knew that it was a site that needed to be developed, and it is targeting the UNMC population. We know that the, the explosion of employment that is happening there, that this particular unit will likely do well there. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Zach Reinhardt, Burlington Capital, one-zero-zero-four Farnham Street, Suite 400, here on behalf of the developer, having to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come forward. Give your name and address, please.
Katrina Thompson, eight-one-seven South Thirty-eighth Street, Unit 15. And I had already emailed a concern about the parking, just because there isn't the one-to-one ratio that was taken away, and that some of the units are going to have two bedrooms, and so that is a concern for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon, my name's Ryan Hauser, I live at eight-one-five South Thirty-eighth Avenue.
Did you say Brian or Ryan?
Ryan with an R.
Okay.
Our house is just south of the proposed site here. Our house is just south of the proposed site here. I also am concerned about the parking, that there's not even one full spot per unit, but that seems like that needs to be addressed. There's not any room for off-street parking, as is. You know, there's just not, you know, seat butts right up to it. Those people are already spilling into our neighborhoods like mad, you know? So, this needs to be addressed. Also, you know, I know that another member here could speak to the construction that just happened recently, just to the south and to the west of us. There's a lot of construction parking. You know, there's a lot of construction workers that are all over the neighborhood, you know? So, I don't know whether they're planning on parking. If you go up and you look in that area, there's nowhere to go. So, I don't know what the plan is. They're going to be going back and forth across Leavenworth, being in our neighborhood for a whole nother year plus. It's very stressful, okay? And also, is there going to be a street light at 38th and Leavenworth, 38th Avenue and Leavenworth? Because if we have that many new residents that are going to be there, there's going to be a lot of people crossing, trying to get in and out of Leavenworth, and maybe already in the plans, I don't know, but I think it needs to be addressed. So, those are my concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Any other opponents?
Kyle Herbert, President and CEO for Levon Nebraska at 3867 Leavenworth Street. Not necessarily an opponent, more neutral, but as Ryan alluded to, I was the organization that just built to the south and to the west, so exactly catty corner from this location. Parking is an issue. We have approximately 70 parking spots in our facility. I have approximately 80 employees. They're never all in the building at one time. However, when we do fill up, employees do have to park on the street, and finding street parking is extremely challenging. So, not having the one-to-one or more is going to be difficult. Construction parking is going to be a major challenge. Kiwit was our contractor. When I would show up on-site for our owner, architect, contractor meetings, I would literally have to park about four blocks away and walk to our site during the construction process. Third and final point is the light at 38th Avenue. It is extremely challenging to leave our building, let alone with 170-plus residents at that corner. Leaving 38th and Leavenworth and going any specific direction down Leavenworth is going to be even more of a challenge without a light at that intersection. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Kyle. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Dewan Hayes, 2608 Patrick Avenue. I've just been taking notes throughout the time, and something I hear a lot is parking, 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 parking. And does that not disturb anybody? Like, we talk so much about where we're going to go put our car, but less about like why or how we're getting there. Cars are an ends to a means. It's about transporting us from one place to another, goods and services, et cetera. Yet, so much of our time, money, and infrastructure is dedicated to accommodating that without thinking about how and why we're getting there, and how addressing our transportation needs could actually reduce the amount of cars present, thus you would need less parking that would actually be dedicated for livable space, usable space. So, much of our ground surface area in Omaha already is dedicated to concrete pads to place our cars, and we're not using them right now. But we're going to use them later eventually. And so, I think when we're hearing about parking accommodations and how much parking there's going to be, we really need to think about where we're working toward. Are we working to have more parking in Omaha? Is that what we need? Is it perpetual, endless list of, I guess we'll just have more parking? Or are we going to talk about transportation as a whole and address how our...where we live could actually meet our needs in such a way that we wouldn't have to need more parking? So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dewan. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing from the applicant. Does anyone want to come up and address? Seems like the parking was the major, and construction parking.
Zach Reinhardt, Burlington Capital, 1004 Farnham Street, Suite 400. So, parking is certainly something that we have looked at quite extensively in this project. As Bridget mentioned, our target resident audience, the folks that we really expect to be living in this housing are related to the Med Center. Our proximity to the Med Center, we believe, will result in tenants that...or residents that don't have the same parking needs that you might find in projects elsewhere, maybe projects that aren't directly adjacent to the Med Center. We are right across 38th Avenue from where the Med Center campus begins. They have extensive parking for their employees south of Leavenworth. Parking is always a challenge, and we understand it. We've actually...with our unit mix, we...there are a handful of two-bedroom units, but the majority of our units are studio-in-one-bedroom, understanding that that's our resident mix that we expect to have. So, we're really close to a one-to-one parking ratio when you look at number of bedrooms. We additionally have pretty significant bike parking infrastructure inside the parking garage. So, we feel like the amount of parking will be sufficient for the project and our resident mix. Construction parking is certainly a concern, and we've actually had conversations internally about how we will stage our construction, and we'll work closely with the neighborhood to make sure that, you know, any construction parking concerns that come up, we will work with the neighborhood to resolve those.
Zach, I've got maybe a question for you, maybe a question for Bridget, but it's the request for the TIF.
Sure.
Amount, right? So, looking at numbers here, and obviously, you know, it's a good project, don't get me wrong, it's a great project, but you're asking for 3.3 million dollars. Are these costs pretty firm? I mean, you've identified and itemized all these costs, are these pretty firm? You've got 28 million dollars worth of costs in this, which equates to about $163,000 per unit, which is pretty high. Are these firm? Because I'm trying to get to a right percentage of the TIF request versus what the real costs are going to be.
That's a great question. Those...where we're at in our design process, we're coming up to DD drawing set that'll then go out for bid. So, these are numbers that are based on prior experience, having experience developing quite a few multifamily projects in Omaha and around the country. We feel pretty confident that these are the right numbers for this project. You're absolutely right, the 160-some-odd thousand dollars a unit does feel very high. We also would note that the acquisition of the land was more expensive in this location just due to the proximity to the Med Center, the fact that it was cleared. There were a lot of things that made this property's market value higher, which contributes to that $28 million project cost.
What do you anticipate your rents to be, then, to recover the costs on this? I mean, they're probably going to have to be pretty...
We feel comfortable that our rents will range from, on average, obviously, some units being different sizes will have different price structures, but we estimate on average they'll run from about $975 to about $1,500 a month, again, with some variance based on unit size and where it falls in the building.
Okay. And all of these costs, you've got...you paid two and a half million dollars for the land?
Correct.
Right? And best guess estimate, or do you have hard bids on the $21 million hard costs?
That's based...there's no hard bids for that at this point.
Just based on your experience?
Based on our experience and what we've built, very similar projects in the urban core, we feel pretty confident that these are the numbers that we're going to experience on this project.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Great.
Any additional questions for Zach? Bridget, did you want to add something?
Yes, Bridget Hadley, Planning. I just wanted to add, in this conversation we've been having, you were saying about sizing the TIF. They did ask for more, and through our analysis, it was determined that really they could go with less. Excuse me. And then the other point I wanted to bring out that we had during the pre-planning board meeting is that when we look at TIF, we're always looking at the assessed value, because we're talking property, real estate taxes. And the county...Douglas County Assessor is the one who sets those values. We don't know, the developer doesn't even know what that value will be until the project is complete, stabilized, and the assessors actually go out and place the value. It's to the developer's benefit to be conservative on what they're asking for and what they set that value on. And so, we encourage that, and especially in this case, we encourage them to be more conservative in what they think the final value will be. We also know that the assessed value is supposed to be at least 95% to 100%. That's what I believe the county strives for, but pardon me. We know it doesn't always reach that. So, again, it's a conservative number. We believe, and I would believe, that Burlington Capital also believes that because of its location and because of the continued employment increases that UNMC will experience, their building will probably always stay fully leased. And so, the true value will be based on the NOI and cash flows and the success of that project over a longer time. So, more than likely, the value will be much higher. But again, it's better for them to be more conservative when they submit their TIF application.
Any other comments or questions? Eric, do we want to go with agenda item number seven first, or do you want to give both?
Why don't I just talk as a whole, mostly focused on the PUR? Brian did a good job explaining the actual building design. There are a few small tweaks that we would like the applicant to continue to work with us to just minimize any blank walls on the east side and on the north side, just to make sure we're getting the best product that's possible. Also, one item to point out that sometimes has been an afterthought, or it's kind of got us in the end regarding the PUR, and when we're building up to the property lines, is any potential utilities. We don't want that right on the, you know, visible facade or limiting view corridors or anything like that. So, we do have a comment to continue to work with staff to make sure we're identifying the appropriate place for those ground-floor utility infrastructure. You know, just to play off of the proximity to the Med Center, this is also in the future transit-oriented development area on the southern limits. Staff is definitely supportive of the parking ratio based on those two factors. It's nearly the one-to-one parking ratio, and we really do believe that, you know, maximizing that proximity to the Med Center, and we know that not everybody that works there, goes to school there, does not have vehicles. So, I think that's an important factor in this project. We'll give recommendations. Why don't we start with item number seven regarding the TIF? Staff recommends approval.
On agenda item number seven, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda item number 22, Eric.
Staff recommends approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submit of acceptable final PUR plans, including acceptable building elevations prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Eric, can I ask one question?
Yes.
There's a couple of people that brought up lights.
Sure.
Is the traffic study, or what are we doing on those lights?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if there was a specific traffic study submitted for this project, but we do have Public Works available if you'd like them to come up. Ryan, maybe come up real quick.
Good grab, Jeff. Eric and I talked about bringing Ryan up, and then I forgot about it, so...
Ryan Hauser, Public Works. The traffic signal evaluation, as with any place, is based on comparing traffic volumes and projected additional traffic to the federal standards, which dictate whether or not we're supposed to put traffic signals at a given location. So, based on the existing volumes at 38th and Leavenworth and where we project the additional trips, we're still going to be well short of those thresholds. So, that's not to say it's not difficult to turn out of there, especially during peak hours, left turns and through movements in particular, but that is one of the benefits of the grid street network system, is during those times, people know that they can take alternate routes to get to other streets to make safer and more easy movements.
Okay. You finished, didn't you?
Yes.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion on agenda item number 22?
Motion to approve the PUR overlay district subject to submit of acceptable final PUR plans, including acceptable building elevations prior to forwarding to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number eight, case C3-20-40. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the disposal of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: 2521 and 2523 Grant Street, 2522, 2524, and 2528, and 2530 Burdette Street, 2604 Blondo Street, 2610 Blondo Street, 1912, 1910, 1906, and 1902, North 25th Street. And Eric, you're presenting?
Yes, on behalf of the City of Omaha. So, this request involves the potential disposition of 12 parcels totaling approximately just a little bit under 54,000 square feet in total, which is about 1.24 acres. These are currently vacant properties. We've received a request from Holy Name Housing to purchase these for the future use of single-family We would go through the appraisal process to determine the value of these properties before ultimately ending up disposing of them.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Hello, Dewan Hayes, 2608 Patrick Avenue. It's exciting that the neighborhood's changing. There's been vacant lots for a long time. I've lived in the neighborhood for about three years, and it really is kind of depressing seeing empty space. But also, what's really awesome about that empty space is what it could be, the potential that it has. Then, the stories I hear of elders talking about walking down the street, and you couldn't go from one place to another without, you know, your mother knowing where you are, because it was built to be a community that you connected to, and that you see each other and you feel a part of that. I live there now, and it doesn't really feel that way. We have lots of new houses in the area, but many of them are pretty far back, suburban style, mostly driveway...more...you see more driveway before you see neighbor. And with...that's concerning, because we're talking about wanting to improve and revitalize a neighborhood, yet we're doing more to separate physically by creating barriers with our designs. You know, Ms. Franklin mentioned earlier about the challenge that can happen with funding and design, and I think we should address that. I actually have a whole team of designers and architects, landscape folks, who are willing to work with you, to come up with a plan, so we can think of something creative in the budget with materials that are different, but are still creating unique opportunities for people to live. I'm not saying we need more housing, it's obvious, but how we do it is really important. We recognize that materials and labor are the largest expenses, so let's change our materials and let's train our labor, versus kind of settling for the default, whatever the market gives us, and that's the design we get, and we'll just go with that until when. Omaha means the people who move against the current. That's literally what the Omaha tribe means. And we're really going with the flow. And we have an opportunity to change that and to be able to work with our awesome partners who want to see housing and new opportunities created for people. Well, let's make those opportunities better than what we've been doing for the last 20 years. And so, with the...and also, I understand that it's a technical term for things to disposal, but when you say disposal in talking about people's community, it just feels kind of icky. So, look at...maybe look at the terminology. I get that it's a technical term, but when I hear my...the proper next to me is being disposed of, it just...it really tears, especially when you know where you are and what you're talking about. So, consider as you will, but I wanted to share that.
Okay. Thank you, Dewan. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
My name is Juanita Johnson, and I'm not so sure that I'm an opponent.
Need your address, Juanita.
2520 Franklin Street.
Okay, thank you.
I'm... I'm kind of caught in the middle of where I want to be first. I mean, I'm in the middle. You kind of went a little quick regarding proponent versus opponent, so I didn't get a chance to come up.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, I'm going to give a little history regarding this area that we're talking about, because I'm not sure that this group is aware of the fundamental features of that area. I'm having some trouble pulling up my document here. Here we go. Just one second, please. All right, doesn't look like I'm going to be able to get my document to come up. Anyway, so my name is Juanita Johnson, and I'm with the Long School Neighborhood Association. The Long School Neighborhood Association was built, the homes were, began to be built back in the late 1800s. So, that area is very unique. And there is lots of homes. The neighborhood was named after Long School. Long School was noted for the beautification of the building back in that time period. It was the first building that had glass window paint, similar to what you might see in a Catholic structure, in terms of a church panel and the glasses. As time went on and the neighborhood changed, and we had the interstate come through and separate North Omaha, we've seen a lot of things go up and down. But one of the fundamental things that's happening in our area is that that is a poverty area. People in that neighborhood are hopeless. They're not engaged with civic affairs. They're not engaged with being at the table when decisions like this is being made. One thing that I disagree with, with what Dewan is saying regarding involvement and getting people to network with each other and be more community-oriented. I don't think it has anything to do with the location of the homes. It has everything to do with when we're making these types of decisions, and you're in a poverty area, and we, as individuals that may not have, we may have, we may be middle-income individuals, we may be on a higher money scale, but the poor people are not at the table. And so, when we're way up here and they're way down here, and they're not at the table when these discussions are being made, we think that we're helping them. Many times, we're missing the mark, and we're not helping them at all. And so, because I live in that neighborhood, I get to hear those comments that we're not at the table. We're concerned about our city government not involving us with these decisions. So, my only concern with this project is that we engage the neighborhood with these houses. When we started off with the sale of these houses, the city reached out to Holy Name. I'm concerned, did they reach out to other people or other nonprofit organizations or any other sources that might have wanted to have the same opportunity as Holy Name in purchasing these properties? And if they have not done that, I would strongly encourage that we do so in the future. Also, encourage the city to reach out to the Neighborhood Association prior to making these offerings, because we may have some ideas ourselves, and that would decrease the amount of hopelessness that this area is feeling when it comes to change. We welcome change. We want change. We want our vacant lots filled, but we want to be included. We've asked for that over and over and over again. And many times, we're not being heard. We're being tagged as being agitators when we're not being agitators. We are just asking to be a part of the solution. Give us that opportunity. I would also encourage Holy Name to, since this is going to be a two-year project, communication, the ball of communication drops all the time. That's a long time period. Keep us informed in that process. We've had discussions, and we've had some ideas talked about, but we want to be engaged throughout that whole time period. There will be contractors coming into the neighborhood, blocking the street. It will, some people may not be able to go in and out of their homes because of the construction. Again, we want to be engaged in that process. Many times, we're not, and we need to see some changes in that in order for us to restore a community where residents are engaged. That's how you engage a community, is by talking to them, not talking at them, but talking to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Juanita. Are there any, not going to cast Juanita as a proponent or an opponent, but are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the board?
So, maybe just to clarify a few things. This item is on the agenda because we, the city, these are city-owned properties, city-owned vacant lots. The city received a request to purchase these lots from Holy Name Housing. And so, anytime that we have city-owned property, we just had one last month, 214th and just south of West Center. So, it's a similar example. When it's a city-owned property, we receive a request, a written request. We route that documentation around to different departments, including parks, Public Works, finance departments, planning department, obviously. You know, looking at the possibility of declaring this, we used to use the term surplus, or disposition, or sale of this property. And when the different departments indicate that, yes, you know, we no longer need this land or facility for government function, it goes through this process to determine whether that sale to that private company or person can be had. So, you know, this specific item, there wasn't any RFP or request for proposal. We're responding to that request.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, when we have a zoning change or something like that, we have a notification 300 feet or whatever, is that similarly followed on a disposition of public property?
I'd have to look, Mike, if you grabbed that file for me. Yes, we do notify, I think usually it's the adjacent property owners. It does not, state law does not require us to do the 300-foot in this scenario, but I think as a courtesy, we always do the adjacent.
Gotcha.
If, and I'll have Mike check on that to be sure.
I do have some comments to be made. Perhaps.
Would you, you have to call her back. You have to call her back. Juanita, will you wait just a few minutes here, and Sidney can call you up. I did close the public hearing, but you can come up. Just let Eric finish his thoughts.
Yeah, so usually, the notification is to the adjacent properties. That's my coworker, Chris Wayne. We do also notify neighborhood associations in that scenario. So, this process is basically to determine, you know, whether the transaction can occur. You know, so there'll be a full, after Planning Board, there's usually a full appraisal with this type of request to determine the actual value of the land, which the purchase has to be at a minimum that appraised value.
Got all you had?
That is, unless you have any further questions. Staff recommends approval.
I think Sidney wanted to call up.
I don't have a question, but if you have something to say, I can call you down.
To speak to whether, I'll say my name and all that again?
Yes, please.
My name is Juanita Johnson, 2520 Franklin Street. I am the president of Long School Neighborhood Association. And to speak to, if we received the notification, it may have been into the interest of the city Planning Department to notify us. We did not receive notification on this. But I also would add that because we have a, the Long School is in a part of a development plan, some of the verbiage in that development plan speaks to the engagement of the Neighborhood Association being at the table on all stages of these things. So, that would also provide us with the added coverage of us being at the table when something like this is being decided. Just wanted to share that information with you guys.
Thank you.
I think, just to answer the question, you got notified as part of the Neighborhood Association?
No, sir, I didn't.
How did you find out?
I found out when Holy Name conducted a meeting at the Black Plains Museum and not our Neighborhood Association. And once I found that out, I called Mike and got myself up to speed.
Well, ultimately, they're the ones that have requested this, and the city has taken the position, well, we still have to act on it, but the city is recommending that we go ahead and allow these to be sold. But that is your proper contact with Mike, the one that's applying for it to try to...
Right, we've done that.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm past this situation, but I'm just laying a foundation for this body to be aware of the fact that, you were going to say something?
No, I was just going to say, in case you, if the Neighborhood Association did not get that for some reason, you may want to talk with the city staff, make sure we've got the proper address for it and something like that.
I will do that, but I would, I'm asking for this body to be concerned about the concerns in North Omaha as it relates to the way we're communicating to neighborhood associations, and how the sale of properties are going about without us not necessarily being at the table. And that seems to be a problem, and that problem erodes into this hopeless situation that we have regarding citizens not being connected to the political forefront.
Juanita, can I ask you? So, as far as being at the table, when somebody wants to purchase property from the city, you know, then we have to decide if that's, you know, the direction that the city wants to go. I think the, we would not be able to, like, invite you to the table to ask if that's okay to sell it to them or to ABC Company or all these companies. I think the table you need to be at is, once it's sold, go to the developers and say, "We'd like to be involved in the developing of these houses."
I think the disconnect that we're having as a Neighborhood Association is that because we have a development plan, we have a Long School development plan, and the wording in that states that we should be at the stage where, before the purchasing, we should be there, and we're not. So, that's the disconnect that we're having.
Just for my own, you're fine with the communication that you've had with Holy Name, correct?
Yes, but I would also...
But you're not fine with the communication that the city hasn't provided you? Is that what you're saying?
That's one piece. And then, once Holy Name does, if you guys approve that they do purchase the property, I'm also concerned with that that two-year period that they will have to build the property, that there is not a disconnect between the Neighborhood Association and Holy Name, that we're continuing this engagement. That's what I'm concerned about.
Juanita, I have a quick question. Hi. Was the Neighborhood Association aware that the city owned a number of properties in your neighborhood?
Yes, we were, and we've been talking about this with city planning off and on and off and on, and we do have a gentleman agreement. I had a gentleman agreement with Chris Wayne and the city Planning Department, and we had agreed that going forward, that we would, before acquisitions, that we would be notified, that the Neighborhood Association would have a conversation with city planning about those proposed...
Lots.
Yeah, and that didn't happen in this case. And I'm asking that we respectfully honor that gentleman agreement. Granted, we don't have it in writing, but we had that agreement. And not only did we have that agreement, but the development plan speaks to that language in its, in its plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Juanita. Chris, did you want to come?
Chris Wayne with the City of Omaha Planning Department staff. I did receive a request from Autumn to send a notification to the neighborhoods. I did send an email to both Juanita and to Dewan, because they both represent two different Neighborhood Association groups in that area. So, they both, I think, were notified. Did you receive the email? Yeah. So, and we do, we do continue to have a long, a lot of discussion with the Long School Neighborhood Association. In addition to that, there was a public meeting, I think that Mike had notified all the, associated, all the neighborhoods in that area. He and I, among others in our staff, were at the Great Plains Black History Museum at that meeting for about four hours, available for anyone, you know, kind of as an open house, walk in. So, it had a number of good discussions with various people, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Do you want to give the recommendation or have you done?
Yeah, I mean, staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions, or do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number nine, case C3-20-41. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the disposal of city-owned property under Community Development Law. Location: 2806 North 26th Street. And Eric, you're presenting. Dewan, you sure you, are you getting ready to leave for this?
I don't know what I'm getting into here, so. All right, yeah, so this request, this is just one parcel, slightly under 5,000 square feet. This is another request from Habitat for Humanity for a future, one single-family residence. This disposition would be under Community Development Law. So, it's a slightly different process, aside from the appraisal. When there is an identify, or an approved community redevelopment area and subject to an approved redevelopment plan, may be sold, leased, or transferred at its fair value for uses in accordance with that redevelopment plan.
Okay, any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board?
Just recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 10, case C12-20-42. Applicant, City of Omaha, requests preliminary and final plat approval of Gene Lahey Mall Replat 2, a minor plat inside city limits. Property is located within an ACI-1 overlay district. Location: northeast of 10th and Farnham Streets. Did Chris leave?
That'll be me. Well, no, a different Chris, so.
Oh, it's a different Chris, sorry.
I should be at the podium all this meeting, I guess. So, no, this is a minor plat for the eastern portion of Gene Lahey Mall. This portion is east of 10th. This portion is east of Tenth Street. Last month, we did a plat for the area to the west of Tenth Street. There's a small portion that's not included in the plat. And the reasoning for that is, there's an existing, what's called the Greenhouse Building, Greenhouse Apartment Building, located there just north of Farnham Street. They are not included in this plat, but there is an existing memorandum of understanding between the City of Omaha, going back several decades, with that development or structure. And so we are working with the Greenhouse building on any potential modifications or changes that the riverfront revitalization may result in. And in, in the near vicinity, obviously, their building is not going to be impacted or changed or anything like that. So there's continued conversations between the City of Omaha and our representatives regarding that agreement. And there is also an existing city garage that is not included in this plating portion. So there'll be further replating efforts that include that city garage at a later date. Just one other point is, the revitalization effort has gone to the Urban Design Review Board for 60% approval as we continue on in, in efforts involving, you know, revitalization Gene Lahey Mall, Lewis and Clark Landing, Heartland of America Park. So there's going to be a series of plats, and this is just the next, the next plat. That's all I have until the recommendation.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat and approval of the final plat, subject to an acceptable subdivision agreement if necessary prior to forwarding to city council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move for approval of the preliminary plat and approval of the final plat, subject to an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary prior to forwarding to city council.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Um, I believe we're at agenda item number 23. Case C eight dash seventeen dash two fifty-seven. Applicant, Ponca Tribe of Nebraska, request approval of a one-year extension of a large project special use permit in a GI district. Location, 5701 South 85th Circle, 5639, 5723, 5805, 5810, and 5820, South 86th Circle. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Tricia C. with Kimley Horn, address is 767 Eustace Street in St. Paul, Minnesota. I and Kimley Horn wrote a letter to request an extension to the special use permit for the Ponca Tribe. Larry Vogli is here as well, who runs all the health services for Ponca. So two years ago, we were here to get the special use permit approved for a variety of uses for the Ponca Tribe to take over an old corporate campus at the end of South 86th Circle. They closed on the land shortly thereafter, and they have occupied the property. So a couple of the buildings, there's three main buildings on the property. One of them, they've moved a lot of their administration folks into and are using it. That was the executive building on site. And the transportation building on the southeast side has been occupied and is being used for that. The main building, the intent is to use it for a health clinic. Ponca currently operates a health clinic further north in Omaha, and they're going to move the operations and expand them down there. And quite simply, working with Indian Health Services to get all the approvals that are needed has just taken a lot longer than planned. So everything is still the exact same plan as we came in two years ago. We're just simply requesting the extension to allow for the approvals to happen and for them to start construction yet, hopefully, in this year.
Two years ago, you had some opposition. There was the cabinet shop or wood shop. Have you heard any more?
Um, a little, in a good way, I think. You know, we've, they've now been neighbors for almost two years and done so just fine. There hasn't been any issue. There has been some conversation about him potentially selling property to Ponca Tribe. So they have been in communication, and there hasn't been anything adversarial.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
I don't have anything really to add. You know, Trish summed it up, and, you know, the project has been approved. This was just extended out one year. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions of the original large project special use permit approved by city council on February 6, 2018.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, subject, subject to the conditions of the original large project special use permit approved by city council on February 6 of 2018.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rose, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Agenda item number 25, that was on for layover, it was taken off. It is case C seven dash twenty dash fifty-seven. Applicant, new singular wireless PCS LLC, AT&amp;T, request approval of a conditional use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the GI with a waiver of section 55 dash 506 height to allow 125-foot monopole. A portion of the property is located within the floodway overlay district. Location, northeast of 28th and Greby Streets, is the applicant here. Okay, I didn't think so. Are there any proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Go ahead, come forward and give your name and address, please.
Barbara Seds, 2810 Greby Street.
I couldn't hear your name, please.
Do these move down?
You can pull them down.
Barbara Seds, 2810 Greby Street.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a, a couple of things for the projector, please. Oh, I'm afraid it doesn't show up very well. This is my house. And this area to the east is where they're talking about putting the 125-foot tower. Basically, it's 100 feet from my house. The only thing separating, you can actually see it better probably if I hold it up, is the dirt road. And I was just notified of this on the 21st, was the post date on the letter. So I have a couple of issues. First off, that I wasn't notified before they put another telephone pole up. This is on my street. The four telephone poles you see there, or the one, the furthest west is at the end of my driveway there, and the other three are at the end. So within a span of about 125 feet, you have four telephone poles that evidently were put in, put in there for the electric hookups for the cell tower. And they've also been used for one of the LED lights at M U D. So my questions are, there's a lot of questions I really have. Here is, um, this was supposed to have been a temporary pole just over a year ago when M U D. started their remodeling project. And it's a wooden pole right now. I'm not sure what you refer to, a monologue pole. Is that steel?
It'd be similar to that, but it's steel. It'd be similar to that, but steel. It just...
Means it's a steel post top.
Okay. But anyway, so I, I was wondering, here is a view from, out of the window of my house. This is when they were putting the cell towers up. I don't know how many cell towers. I see that, that it's singular that was on the paper. But I don't know how many different companies are going to be involved in, in this with this pole right here. You've got three cells on top of the pole there. And I understand there's different frequencies. I don't know if there's with broadband, if that's going to be a different height. But what I was wondering is if it was, would be possible to just move it further south of the gate, where it's right in the area there is McGill's Restoration. And then the next block down is Kinghorn Gardens. And that way, if it was moved down just a bit, it would avoid pretty much this whole thing, my reason I'm here. So, and my next question, though, is going back to this. As you can see with those wires, I know with the M U D. remodeling and a lot of the security updates and things like that, I kind of question why the power was put above the ground, why they didn't bury it underground for security reasons. Because like, the area I live in, everybody runs the stop sign. And the night before Thanksgiving, someone hit the telephone pole on the corner of 28th and Greby and 28th Avenue. And it knocked out power for my entire area until 4 o'clock in the morning. So, I mean, how is that going to work if all these people are depending on signals from that tower, and it's easily knocked out by a vehicle hitting a telephone pole? So I, I just, I haven't received any answers on this because I, I don't know who to contact, if there is someone, you know, that I, I can contact in regards to this, or if there's any future development. Like I said, I was not informed on the telephone poles at all. So if that would be possible, that would be great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to address all of Barbara's concerns?
Yeah, so this was on the consent agenda for layover. We do, as city staff, we also have concerns about the location of the proposed tower. Just to give a little bit of background, so there was original approval in 1999 for an AT&amp;T tower to be built on top of a structure on their campus. So the M U D. recently renovated the chemical building, and AT&amp;T was asked to move the tower from that roof for security purposes, access, and maintenance. And so AT&amp;T is seeking a new location, and obviously, it is very close to the 28th Street right away on the western portion of the site. The City of Omaha has telecommunication performance standards that, that we utilize when we receive requests for broadcast towers. Within those standards, there's, it's recommended that a tower be located at least 300 feet away from low or middle-density zoning when it's located on a, a general industrial site. Also, the proposed tower is located within the normal landscape buffer yard. And there's certain elements that, you know, that aren't being addressed with landscaping and screening for the associated equipment. So we are recommending layover for the applicant to have further discussions with city staff, with M U D., and, and hopefully, the neighbors. We can get you contact information for them, and we can also give you our information, Barbara, to give you some of the documents that we have and what it would look like and where they're proposing it, although that could change, and hopefully, it does change.
I'm sorry, I forgot one last thing, because my neighbor didn't show up.
Come on up, Barbara. Give your name and address again, please.
Barbara Seds, 2810 Greby. My neighbor Sarah works from home on a computer doing like insurance things and that. And she did say, ever since the, the temporary tower was up, put up, she hears a clicking sound on her phone. She did contact the company to make sure it wasn't just kind of, sometimes companies will check on their employees to make sure, you know, they're doing everything right. And they had not done anything to her lines to listen into calls or anything like that. So the only determination is, is that since it happened when that tower was put up, that might be an issue of maybe a filter or something on it. Thank you.
Yeah, and as you point out, that when they moved it off the building, that is a temporary pole, and that's not a permanent solution. So they're going through the process to try, try to get that permanent approval, but staff has concerns about the proposed location, especially considering the size of the site that it's, that it's being put on. So staff is recommending layover to allow the applicant to meet with city staff.
Any additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, our final agenda item is 27. This was on for approval. It was removed. It's case C 14 dash 20 dash 58. Applicant, planning department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, request vacation of the north-south alleyway, south of Vinton Street, between 17th and 18th Streets, abutting, abutting lots four and five, block zero, J.E. Riley subdivision addition. Do we want to hear from you, Eric, first?
Um, well, I could just briefly say that this is, you know, maybe be more helpful if I put a map up. But this is in north-south alleyway between 17th and 18th Street, just immediately south of Vinton Street. This alleyway is not being used as an alleyway, but has been used as a surface parking lot for several years. The city is looking at vacating this segment to where it meets, there is an east-south alleyway. We're just, thanks, Mike, vacating north of that east-west alleyway. The city does own property immediately adjacent to the east. And if this vacation were to be approved, we would, the city would look at potential future disposition or sale of this property for potential redevelopment.
Which parcels, which sales, I mean?
Yeah, thank you.
Dave Fanzlo, City Planning. This is the part that we're vacating. We also own those two pieces.
Do you have a lease with people for parking?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think it's just an und, it's just, it's used for parking for the district. I mean, Vinton Street doesn't have a lot of parking on it. So I don't really recall when the city came into possession of it, but it's been a while. It's just been kind of used as a parking lot for the district.
Okay. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come forward, sir, give your name and address.
My name, excuse me, my name is Michael Patrick Kenny. 2814 South 17th Street. My family at 2910 South 17th, 1873. I can inform you about everything in and about this particular parcel you're saying. Let's start with the back, that's the back of my property, what you're speaking about, talking about.
Is that, is that still up there?
Bring it up. You've got some of the stuff, information wrong.
Yeah, go ahead and point out what...
Originally, um, I'm at 2814, here's Vinton Street. Where are you at?
Right here is your house.
Right there is my house. And here's the lot, broke, or this lot. Originally, this was a chicken slaughter... Originally, this was a chicken slaughterhouse. Doured it down somewhere in the fifties, because when we were kids, we ran around there and got our butts kicked for it. Next to it is my neighbor Juan. So far as no one using this, this alley that cuts right through here that you're talking about, that's what they want to vacate. They already, assuming that they, the city is assuming that they own this entire one right here, which yuckstipoes my property. And Mark Worrell. Worrell Dean. Begin with eight foot of this particular part is on my plaque, my property, my wife's property. She, her family's been there since nineteen fifty-six. I've been informed, even though there are two historically, this, her house was built in eighteen ninety with a side entrance right here. Been there the entire time, parking the entire time, we've got pictures after pictures. Another entrance into the back, right here, when they used to have dual homes in all that community. And again, I can show you every single one in and around there for an eight block radius. And the finish, we have what, there used to be a garage right here with an easement coming up into it, into this back, that's the backyard. Now, the city proposing to abandon this, take it away, they've told me, and ticketed me, and hauled my wife's car away in the middle of a blizzard when we had the little baby. I've got a seven-year-old and another one on the way. I know, that's the Marine Corps crap. Sorry. But I have, you go on all three sides of my home, I get the opportunity to pay taxes, which I've done very, very well. But not to be able to use anything, man, vote, that is wrong. I vehemently, vehemently, and I will stand my ground as a Marine, right there, that any of it, I'm just tired of it. I have improved that area, I have rebuilt those alleys. They have tre, they allowing traffic cut through here. They've also put in, put now a bar, they've got a dance hall, they've got Louis' that brings a couple hundred people a day. All of this, talk about, I've heard everybody come, talk about parking, parking, parking. Well, now, the traffic is also done damage. Put in a new foundation, put in new walls. They're cracking. And I'm a good builder. I built bridges, buildings for the railroad, for other private enterprises. My objection relies on first, it's my wife's family's home that we've always had access. I mean, we've done the improvements, we've done the work. For all of a sudden somebody to come in and say, well, we need this because there's a bus that stops out here, which blocks his business and he's had a thriving business, Mark's had a thriving business, and now we're going to be shut down. I guess that's what I'm appealing to you, but standing my ground as well.
I got a que, I guess I'm not following exactly everything. The part that the city is vacating is outlined in black.
Yes, and that's the one that yuckstipoes Juan.
Next to the building that I own.
Well, just second Juan, you'd have to come up and give your name and address.
Juan Cruz, seventeen fifteen Vinton Street.
Okay. And so, that part that's outlined in black.
Okay.
How, tell me how that.
Okay, the building that I own, it's right here, right next to, on the east-west side of the parking lot. It's right here, okay, facing Vinton. And it goes all the way back to where you have the outline. I have an entrance over here in the back for my, you know, my back-to-back part of my business, which, you know, I get deliveries and stuff in there. So, they will be closing then down there, and I don't even know if I will be able to get anything from the south side.
So, can they enter from the west there? But are you saying if they, if a truck comes in to enter from the west and deliver, they can't get out?
No, no, no. They come in, okay, they come in through Vinton Street, they get into the parking lot. And back here, that's where I have my door to get my deliveries, okay?
Uh huh.
And I have a back door, okay, there's the building. I have a back door right here where the outline is, that I guess you guys will be closing. And I won't have an entrance in there, neither there or going all the way, you know, to the south side of the building.
Because communication is in light poles and power poles.
So, that's where I have my problem. I've been there for close to eighteen years. And one remark that I would like to make is, even though this parking lot belongs to the city, I have never, in the years that I've been there, seen one plow come and clean the snow. It's usually me paying some private guy doing it, or if it's not big enough, I'll do it with a shovel. You know, and I'm not complaining about it because I use it for parking lot for my, for my business. I painted the lines in here too because they were really, really bad. I paid someone to paint the lines. Because again, even though it belongs to the city, the city doesn't do anything with it. I called last year to see if you guys will sell it to me so I can use it for my business. And, you know, whoever I talked to told me that, no, it was not for sale.
Yeah, um, did you want to come? We're going to be a little bit out of our Roberts Rules of Order, but Dave, did you want to explain anything here?
It's better image.
Juan and Michael, I'm sorry, I'm just a little confused and I hope that Dave can.
No, that's fine.
Can.
So, we're not, just to be clear, we're not, we're not proposing that any of this gets vacated.
Where are we at now, okay.
So, here's your, here's your building.
Mm-hmm. There's the, yeah, the entrance.
You said this is your house, this is not being vacated.
I was already told that you did. And took it away, and ticketed me, and hauled my wife's car away.
Well.
They put up a sign up, sign up parking. I'm the only one that's been cited.
You can't park there because it's city.
He put it, it is on my property on the plaque.
Well, we have survey information that indicates different, so.
So, let me just be clear, why, let me be clear why we're here today.
Okay.
This body's not being asked to vacate any of this, nor does this body have any authority over the enforcement towing whatever might have happened in the past. Why we're here today is this, this is a piece of right-of-way that is, that the city is disposing of.
To?
Nothing.
Right next to the meat market, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Right next to yours.
Right, yeah, right, sure, yep. So, here's your building, there's, this shaded area is the only thing that we're proposing to vacate today.
And vacate for what purposes?
For, to package with these other lots and will entertain RFPs to redevelop that piece of property.
Is that not owned by the city right now, or?
It is.
Yeah, I'm curious as to why they're going through the proceedings.
I just told you, we want to vacate this piece of right-of-way.
Piece of, oh, that was a right-of-way?
Yes. And these.
So, that's an alleyway?
Yes.
So, it's not a parking lot then?
It's not.
No, that's, I don't know the history of how the parking got there, but it shouldn't be there in the alley right-of-way.
I've been there only for eighteen years and since I came there.
And everything else is right there.
So.
I get a seismic graph, and every time anything comes in and out of there, I'm six and seven on a chin shaking my house. I mean, it's that bad.
On this piece of property right here?
Anytime traffic comes through here and cuts through here. And it actually shaken this other building, which happens to be Worrell Dean's building apart.
So, you might be interested in knowing that the city's really tired of being in the business of being a parking lot owner?
You bet.
So, to alleviate some of your concerns, maybe in the future, these two lots and this piece of right-of-way that's being vacated might not be a parking lot anymore.
And they've been, there's been people, two of them are here, requesting to buy it for years.
And you might have an opportunity as we go through this process.
In the future.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, I was just confused, okay, so this is, okay.
So, that used to be an alley that's been registered on the plan.
Okay. Now, Michael, does that?
It does leave some of my concerns.
Okay, alright. Mark, you got to give your name and address.
Mark Worrell, twenty-seven twelve South Seventeenth. I'm right here.
You're right where now?
Right, right there.
Okay.
This building right here.
Alright, gotcha.
And I guess maybe the terminology, when you say vacated, then it was an alley, you're getting rid of the alley.
Getting rid of the alley to make it a parcel that would still be owned by the city in this circumstance.
Okay.
But.
That's fine.
Yes.
Yes.
There's an awful lot of confusion as to where it was at. And I didn't even get any paperwork, I got some paperwork from, they didn't send it to me. The paperwork thing, sounds like it might be an issue. I didn't get any. I just, Mike gave me the paperwork and I wanted to, I'm close there, so I definitely want to know and want to know what's going on. And I guess I'd be interested in doing something with it if you guys ever want to sell it. But I just wanted to know what was being vacated, basically, and what you guys were, what was going on. Because right now, we got a, and this is a completely different thing, but I think they vacated an area in between these two buildings here, now that's cut off. And I can't even get to my building here to work on it, to work on the side, to work on the brick, because it's closed here and it's closed there. And there's no way, if, if things deteriorate, brick, mortar comes out, I can't get in there to even fix anything. So, I'm really worried about them doing, selling off the backside and maybe, I don't know what's going to happen, but you don't know. Somebody buys it and then they can do whatever they want to with it and then you have a real problem. I just want to be able to maintain my building to make sure that it's, you know, sound.
One thing you might, as Dave was saying, what we're here to do today is to vote on turning that former alley, which is actually a parking lot right now, but turning that into surplus property that the city owns, okay? And then as you saw earlier today, where someone can approach the city for surplus property to see if the city would sell it, that's a totally different action than we're taking right here. But it is something that you as adjoining property owners would have the right to do at that point in time. Once it's declared owned by the city as opposed to a dedicated alley.
That's wonderful. I guess, I wasn't sure, so rather than just not do anything, I thought I'd better get down here and find out what's going on.
Well, I'm glad you guys pulled it off so that this could be clarified.
Yeah, thank you very much.
To be honest, it doesn't look like your typical alley, so I.
Because it's been carried to something else and yet, when I was a kid, I know something was there. And so, whether they built something above it, although it was a breezeway, a walkway from the original one, and their pen's up in your alleyway. But if you, if you vacate it, fear is that it's going to go up and then all of a sudden, Juan, who just had to leave again because he had a delivery truck coming actually right now, and we lose all control there. I mean, I just, I know you guys are not the ones that set the different thing. I'm a pretty intelligent guy, but what happens is the bureaucracy really gets to it. He said, she said, and then I guess I've annoyed some very political people across the street. And but we've got way, way, way too much. We didn't even know about a bar being built there and yet, what, have you all changed? Your minds on the way procedures go forward, but it just got its grand opening and none of us knew anything about it. I don't know how that slipped through or who's responsible. He's got only six parking spots, Juan. So, if you vacate it, rename it as part of this lot, what happens next? What's, what's going, can we table it until we get some more studies on?
No, I think we should proceed with the vacation. Nothing would change as far as the appearance. So, nothing would change as far as the appearance if the vacation goes through at this time, okay? Later on, well, later on, when there would be an RFP, the city would be seeking potential, you know, requests for people to purchase the city property, including this vacated area, to potentially do a project. At that time.
You have no, okay, how come it hasn't been honored the parts that were asked about purchasing on the other side already? I'm just curious. Because there's been two interested parties to purchase the parking lot now. Without the alley, without them even knowing about the alley, I, all my life I lived there, I didn't know about that alley.
I'm not aware of those requests.
Because the rest of the alley going all the way south is all dirt. Can barely walk through there, that long drive.
I'm probably really out of order, but I would, it's not very often that I get this type of information. To get to my side over here, this wall that's now that I can't get to because there's a, there's a wall here and a wall here, who do I talk to about if I need to maintain my, because I just don't want this sold somehow and then not being able to. We have to think about when we're selling stuff and we're, because I'm, this guy here's not very nice and he doesn't like me very much. I'm a nice guy, but, so he doesn't want me, supposedly this is his area, and it's, it's, it's an open area, it rains, snow, and it deteriorates. I don't even know, you know, I've got an attorney, I've spent about three grand. And with no avail, I'm still not, I don't know who to talk to. If I could just, you could just tip me in the right direction.
Well, it's a little tricky, I mean, the, I mean, the information that we have on, that produces the images, it shows an approximate property line location. But it looks very close that the property line is right on the edge of your northern facade of that building, which if you need to access it, you do need that easement of that property owner to the north to be able to get on his property to, to address your northern facade, so.
I think that was, that was an alley, or that was a walkway for, from what I understand from everybody that's lived there, and then they closed it off. Now, it shows that evidently, the way the lines are now, that this guy owns it. And that's, I just want to know how, if, to maintain property, you have to maintain your property if you buy it. You guys don't want buildings falling down. I can only get to one side and I don't know who, you're the guy to talk to, huh? Okay, okay, alright. Thank you very much for your time, I really, really appreciate it.
To be sure, and we're not going to vacate the known alleyway that is a dog lane.
Yep, just that part that was highlighted here on this map.
Okay, thank you. May I take this? Thanks folks.
Are you an opponent that wished to speak?
I'm speaking at, I'm taking a neutral position, a neutral position.
Okay. Give your name and address please.
Jeff Deal, seventeen seventeen Vinton Street.
Okay Jeff.
So, again, I just want to take a neutral position on this. I'm sympathetic to the concerns of my neighbors, especially Juan, because I understand he's my next-door neighbor. I understand how the vacation, the eventual sale of the property is going to impact his business. I'm also aware of the potential positive aspects of this for the neighborhood should that lot be redeveloped. And I'm completely in support of that. I guess I would just encourage the city, should the vacation go forward and we move on to the next steps with the sale of the land, that the city work with the immediate neighborhood to sort of work through solutions that can mediate some of the effects on some of the parking concerns. I'm not necessarily concerned with parking personally. But I think there's public work solutions on how we park Vinton Street itself, how it's managed and regulated that can solve some of these issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I'm going to close. Did you wish to speak on this? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Staff recommends approval subject to removal of traffic control devices.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second, Lisa, will you record the vote please?
Moore? Franklin? Carnes?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Pete? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Miss, what were, what were you here for, did you?
I, I have a concern about item of law.
You probably, and it might have been.
Consent for layover.
Yeah, it was on consent for layover. So, it was voted on right at the beginning of the meeting. If you. If you missed it, it was, no action will be taken today. Yeah, but Eric can help you out. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on the pre-meeting, pre-meeting minutes from last month?
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Abstain.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Abstain.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion on the public meeting here, minutes? I'm sorry. I'll get it spit out sooner.
Very good, motion second.
Motion in a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Abstain.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Abstain.
Mr. Chair?
Abstain.
We only have three then, so that doesn't pass.
Oh, I had to abstain because I wasn't here.
I don't think you technically have.
Does that matter, Jen?
Well, actually, you don't, you don't need four for minutes, but you do need a majority of who's here, and you only have three. You don't have.
Patrick was here.
Yeah.
So you abstained since you were here. This is for the minutes.
Just the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, motion approved.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, adjourned at 4:21.